Meeting in order for the day. First item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Move approval, second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the August 13th and 20th, 2019 meetings.
Move. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 13th and 20th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda. CNN, approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and second to pay the bills. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. FM diversion recreation plan. Adam, good morning. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. Is the presentation bumpy, or? I think we've got one for another one, but I'm looking at vouchers.
Wow. That's it? That's not it? Shoot. No, doesn't look like it's long.
That's, that's okay.
We've got it.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for having me here this morning. Again, my name's Adam Althberg with the Fargo-Moorhead Department of Parks and Forest and Governments. One of the projects we're working on currently with the FM diversion authority is the Fargo-Moorhead diversion recreation plan, basically looking at different recreational, non-recreational amenities that could be integrated into the diversion project, as well as start to visualize some other positive amenities that could be associated with the project. So, a couple of project goals that we've come up so far. The main project goal is really kind of looking at kind of year-round activities that could be integrated into the diversion project. Another key component of this is starting to look at restoring native plant communities and creating habitats for different wildlife. Also, looking to complement adjacent existing, this project's looking to complement existing and/or adjacent land uses along the diversion corridor, as well as complementing the protection of the diversion project itself. So, a couple of things that we're looking at is we're looking at both active and passive uses. So, active uses, looking at different types of, different trail types, whether that's for biking, hiking, equestrian, snowmobiling, those sorts of, those sorts of uses. Also, looking to maybe integrate bird watching, other squirting activities as different active uses. Some passive uses that we're looking at though too is potentially looking at integrating community gardens or small egg operations along the corridor, possibly looking at solar installations, pollinator habitats, and other educational opportunities. So, we just kicked off this project here in July, so we've been at it for about two months now. So, we're really just kind of in that first phase, just kind of gathering information and starting to build awareness for this project. As part of that, we have been reaching out to all the jurisdictions that are involved in the diversion project here, just to kind of let them know that we're, this is a project that we're working on, and start to get the word out to the community. One important item associated with this project is going to be funding. So, we are starting to think about the different funding mechanisms that could be, that could be used. To the more traditional funding mechanisms such as grants, public funding, but also starting to think if there are ways or activities that, different activities could actually generate revenue along the diversion corridor itself. Another key component is going to be governance. Basically, what is the ownership going to look like for these different recreational amenities? It's something that we hope to figure out as part of this project. Whether that's going to be a continuation of the three P project, the public-private partnership that's going to be responsible for building the diversion channel, if there's going to be continuation of that as part of their maintenance obligations, whether it's going to be some sort of agreement between the cities and counties, potentially with different recreational groups that might be responsible for minimum operation and maintenance activities. Another idea is it could be a joint powers agreement between the different park districts. These are, these are just some of the ideas that we've come up so far. We don't know what it's going to look like, but we hope that this project will have a better understanding of what governance structure would best serve this project. So, public outreach. We have begun to get the message out to the community. Right now, we're looking at holding a couple of the different pop-up meetings here. We did hold one at Streets Alive here about a week and a half ago, but in the next couple of weeks, we are looking to go to Horse Bean Days. We'll be at West Fargo-West Fest in a couple of weeks, as well as the Red Grove Market. We'll have a booth there. We also have developed a visual preference survey that can be, can be found on our website, so people can go and take a look at that and click on the different amenities that they think that they would like to see as part of this project. Also, we will be having a two-day workshop, probably October 1st and 2nd. We'll have more details on that here in the coming weeks, but it'll probably involve meeting with different stakeholders, including elected officials and other recreational groups in the area, as well as potentially having opportunities to bring people out to the diversion corridor. Different parts where they may be able to start to visualize some of the recreational components that could be integrated, as well as our first official public input meeting. So, that's all I have at this moment. It's pretty brief, but if you have any questions, we have to take them at this time.
I think it's exciting. It'll be interesting to see where it goes, but I think it's something that's overlooked by a lot of people, the recreational opportunities that are possible with diversion projects. So, it'll be, it'll be exciting to see where this all ends up. Kevin, you have something?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is a good deal that's going on here. I just, I have one caution that I want to put out there, and that is, in your project goals, number two, the restore native plant communities and create habitat, I fully support that. However, you know, just outside of that diversion channel is still going to be tillable farmland. And there can be, sometimes there can be some dispute when it gets to be what the farmers need to do for their spraying and that type of thing, when you've, and then you've got native plants, and you can get into a little war there. And I'd like to make sure that we can avoid that. We've already got a lot of landowners giving up a lot of land for this project. So, I just caution that standpoint, but other than that, this all looks good.
Does the diversion project have anything to do with, I mean, they involved in this at all? Was there any plan for the diversion recreational stuff on there?
Commissioner Gross, the, originally, when the diversion project was approved as a federal project, it does allow for recreational use. However, there are no federal funds that.
Oh, because that's what I'm leading up.
Yeah, there's, there's no federal funds that can go into the recreational aspect of it. And they, they do kind of leave that up to the local communities as far as, you know, I mean, there's, I'm sure they have certain guidelines and criteria, you know, because it is a federal project, there's certain things that can and can't be done. And most of what they're talking about here is right in the actual diversion channel itself. This wouldn't apply to south of the dam structure, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Kim? Hi, thank you. Adam, I was wondering about, you mentioned income-producing situations. So, that would be in the form of like permits for bow hunting or something like that?
Potentially, yes. If there were to be camping opportunities that could generate income. Another, another idea that's been brought up is hang, potentially, that could generate, generate revenue.
Sure, that's good.
There's probably different, there's different mechanisms.
And the channel is going to be how many miles long? Twenty-three miles long?
Thirty-plus, I believe.
Thirty-five. And will there be water in it most of the time? Or some of the time?
Towards the upper rush, I believe there'd be some, you might have water that would be there most of the, most of the time for the rest.
I guess my question would be, that would undoubtedly attract a lot of ducks and geese.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Andy? Is that one of the things they're looking at, is duck hunting and goose hunting in there?
It's brim vado, yes.
Commissioner Andy, the diversion channel will not see any operation from water from the Red River, you know, until the Red River reaches 37 feet, and it would start to channel through. However, there are certain parts of the channel that will still be used for the maple and the rush rivers. That'll still, and then also, there will be areas of runoff for farmland. That'll still be able to hit that channel. So, there will be water in it, but probably not the full channel, I believe, is going to be, you know, it's pretty, pretty wide and very deep.
Sure.
You know, so, yeah. But from that standpoint, it's, there will be some water, but it's not intended to be, you know, used lots of.
All right. And then the other thing I was wondering about, you mentioned snowmobile usage, and of course, I see there's kayaks, and there's mountain bikes, and all wonderful things of it. Then how about ATVs, UTVs, things like that? Are you talking about using that too?
Definitely, yes.
Good. And I guess that was my only question, is not to neglect those recreational opportunities for a good number of people that really enjoy those type of things. Thank you.
That's one lesson. I think it would be worthwhile to reach out to Winnipeg too, if you haven't done it already, to see what their diversion channel, it's, you know, it's, you know, that whole thing starts south of Winnipeg, and I'm not sure what the access is for public, but I would think we should reach out to them to see what amenities they may have in terms of recreational uses of that, of that area.
Part of the two-day summit that we're hoping to hold in October, we have discussed actually reaching out to Winnipeg to maybe see if they would be able to come down to present, because they did a recreational plan about seven or eight years too. So, it'd be interesting to see what all they, they've been able to accomplish.
Very good.
Anything else?
Let's get it built.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item is request to reappoint Kurt Stubbs to a second term on the planning commission. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning. Yeah, so, last month, the planning commission recommend, recommend the appointment, reappointment of Kurt Stubbs to his second term on the planning commission. So, he's out of the saving area, kind of serving as in the rural position on the planning commission. So, this would be his second term.
Yep. Move to approve. Have a motion to approve, and we have a second. I'll second the motion, so. See where we're at here with this. Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation, property assessed clean energy. Manager Pete Lindstrom, Clay County Energy Resource Teams. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We can bring another chair up if you want.
Right here you go. Right here you go. Use this one right here. All right, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, good morning again. I'm Peter Lindstrom. I'm from the Clean Energy Resource Teams. And I'll be doing some help.
I'm from the St. Paul Port Authority.
I'm Derek Lapointe with Downtown Moorhead Inc. Also do that economic development work for the city of Moorhead, so happy to be here.
Yeah, thanks for having us. I was here a few years ago to talk about property assessed clean energy, so this might be a bit of a refresher for some of you. At that time, as I recall, the board was interested and wanted to wait until there was actually a project before you to consider moving forward with property assessed clean energy. And here we are, a few years later, and we've got a project ready to rock and roll. And so, just before launching the debate about PACE, I mentioned that from the Clean Energy Resource Teams, we're based out of the University of Minnesota. We're part of U of M Extension down on the St. Paul campus. We have four main partners. One is the U of M. One is the state of Minnesota is a partner, Southwest Regional Development Commission, and the Great Plains Institute, a nonprofit in the Twin Cities. And we have a straightforward mission. We're all about helping communities and individuals do clean energy projects across the state. So, diving into the topic of the day, property assessed clean energy or PACE. It's a way for businesses, nonprofits, faith communities, multi-housing providers, really anybody except residential at this point, to do energy efficiency improvements or utilize renewables and pay for it as an assessment on their property tax bill. These projects are growing in popularity because there's always an energy audit or an energy assessment component to these projects. And so, you'll have an energy auditor come into the, to business and say, gosh, if you change out your lights to LEDs, if you put in more insulation, new HVAC, you'll save $10,000, for example, on your utility bill. The assessment will always be lower than what they'll save on an annual basis. So, they'll save the $10,000 on their utility bill. The, the save, or the assessment will be $8,000, for example. And I'll go into a couple of case studies that, that show that. And so, so, PACE can finance energy efficiency projects, renewable projects, even electric vehicle charging stations. Some businesses are putting in these EV charging stations or multi-housing apartments are putting in EV charging stations. So, the green areas on this map are where we have PACE established. And so, we were, we were in Norman County, maybe a month and a half, two months ago. They have, they just established PACE in Norman County and have a project up there. And Becker County's had it for quite a while. Otter Tail, maybe a year and a half, two years, with projects in each one of these areas. The circles, the orangish dots are where we've had PACE projects. This has 188 projects. It's actually over 200 projects completed right now. And that's, that's our request to you today is, these counties are passing joint powers agreements with the St. Paul Port Authority, and that simply enables the Port Authority to do projects in Clay County. So, as I mentioned, we've had over 200 projects so far, 63 million worth of projects, considerable amount of savings for these businesses, 157 billion BTUs. And if you're like me, you're kind of wondering, gosh, what does that, what exactly does that mean? It sounds like a lot. That is, I'm told, the amount of BTUs that a city of about four, five, 6,000 people would save or would use on an annual basis. So, fairly considerable savings for these businesses. So, it used to be the maximum that a business could receive was 20% of the assessed value of the property. So, the, what the county says is the assessed value. So, if it's valued at $100,000, 20,000 is the maximum that that business could receive. The legislature this past year changed the law, the PACE legislation, so that a business or a nonprofit could still use that assessed value calculation or appraised value. And the reason this is a bit of a game changer is for new construction. So, if you're looking at a kind of a rundown strip mall or something like that, that's not valued at that much, and you want to build a new hotel there, PACE wouldn't get you that far with the new construction, financing for the new construction. But if you looked at appraised value, what the new hotel or the new senior housing is going to be appraised at, and you use 20% of the appraised value, now you can allocate significant amount of funds for this new, for new construction. And the Port Authority tells me that they have a dozen or 15 or so new projects in the pipeline that will be using the appraised value. This happens to be a mock-up of a new hotel in Rochester that's using PACE financing. So, so, this is, New York Times did an article about how PACE is expanding across the nation, and they highlighted a auto mechanic shop in the Twin Cities that put a 20 KW solar array on top of their building. And what I wanted to highlight here is, there's, there's two PACE, I'll back up just a second. There's two PACE programs in the state. One is the, what's called the Rural Minnesota Energy Board, and that's 18 counties in southern, southwest Minnesota that when wind started becoming a big issue a couple of decades ago, they formed a joint powers authority, call it the Rural Minnesota Energy Board, and they have a PACE program just for businesses, nonprofits, in those 18 counties in the southern part of the state. The second public entity is the St. Paul Port Authority, and they have a PACE program called MinPACE, which Michael helps run the show. And, and so, the Port Authority is signing these joint powers agreements with counties all across Minnesota. And so, whether or not you're talking about the St. Paul Port Authority's PACE program or the Rural Minnesota Energy Board's PACE program, there's a few commonalities. First is that, that maximum, that 20% max on appraised value or assessed value. Second is that business, they've, they've got to be a good business. They have to be up on all their, their federal, state, local taxes. They have to provide three years' worth of financials. They can't be in bankruptcy. So, it has to be a good business to move forward. Little bit about the project process. So, first of all, the local government has to establish PACE in that area. The role for the county is two, maybe threefold. One, to consider the joint powers agreement, consider establishing PACE, which is what we're doing today. Two, when there is a business or a nonprofit in the area that wants to utilize PACE, the county places a voluntary special assessment on that one business. It's the business coming to you saying, please place this assessment on my property so that I can do this energy efficiency project. And so, the, the entity in town that wants to utilize PACE is the Park Christian School. They have a large expansion project, and they want to use PACE to finance the energy efficiency components of their expansion project. I think we read it's like a $5 million expansion project, thereabouts.
For the PACE portion, they're looking for about just under $300,000.
Right, so it's LEDs, HVAC, kind of your standard energy efficiency type improvements for, for that entity. So, the project process is the local government establishes PACE. They submit a six-page application, pretty much name, rank, serial number, information, a little bit about what the project is all about. Attached to that application is that energy audit that I mentioned at the outset here. Three years' worth of financials, and it's submitted to Michael. Michael has a credit committee that reviews it on a, reviews all the PACE applications on a monthly basis and gives it the thumbs up or thumbs down, and typically, it's the thumbs up. That business or entity can hire whoever they wish to get the project completed. And then, and then, as I mentioned at the outset, these are cash flow positive, typically, projects. So, they use the savings to help pay the assessment when they pay their property taxes in May and October. These are, these are loans, so the interest rate is typically 5% and 10-year term fixed, 10-year fixed term for 5% interest rate. So, fairly competitive. A few frequently asked questions that, that boards often have is, well, gosh, what if that business goes out of business five years down the line? Is Clay County ever on the hook to pay back? Michael at the, at the Port Authority, and when the legislature established PACE back in 2010, they made it absolutely clear that in no way, shape, or form is the local government ever on the hook to pay back these PACE loans. It's only the assessment on the property that can pay back the Port Authority. Another frequently asked question is, gosh, is this a huge, big program? We're already busting at the seams. What's the time commitment for our staff? And what I'm told is counties are good at placing assessments, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong here. I met with Steve a month, month and a half ago, that this is really within the wheelhouse of county operations. Typically, you know, you'll see one or two or three of these projects a year. I should also mention that, that the, so the role for the county is to collect the assessment, along with collecting the property taxes, and then passing that assessment on to the St. Paul Port Authority. If you wish, you're welcome to deduct any sort of fee, any sort of reasonable fee for staff time, and pass the rest on to Michael at the Port Authority. And the way I look at it is, this is one more tool in the toolbox for your, your economic development team to, to help your businesses, help your nonprofits thrive in the area. I'll just mention on this slide, so I mentioned, you know, it's, that utility bill is kind of a tough thing to swallow for a lot of businesses on a monthly, monthly basis, and so this helps lower their utility bill. One unique aspect to PACE is that if you do the LED improvements, or the HVAC, or whatever it might be, insulation, you see the benefits when you flip the switch on those brand-new lights. You start seeing the savings. You don't make your first payment until May of the following year. So, you start seeing savings in September, September 3rd, 2019, you make your first payment, May 2020, and you see savings until that, that point. For renewable projects that's particularly... For renewable projects, that's particularly a good thing because same sort of thing, you put your, your solar panels up on the roof, September third, start seeing savings, make your payment in May, but you also take advantage of a thirty percent federal tax credit if you are a business, when you pay your federal taxes. So that's a benefit as well. So I mentioned that the energy audit is an important component to PACE, and a frequently asked question is, well, gosh, who, who does those energy audits? We always refer people to their local utility. Utilities are key partners in, in all of these projects. They're providing rebates often. A good rule of thumb is if it qualifies for a rebate, then it qualifies for property-assessed clean energy. And so contact your local utility, they often provide the energy audit. And I also wanted to say, you know, there's an organization, actually an entity of state government called RETAP or Retired Environmental Technical Assistance Program, and it's available for any business, any small business, medium-sized business, or government. So you may want to think about this for yourselves, to have a walkthrough energy audit conducted. And it's free of charge, it's, it's an MPCA program, and it's a, it's a great deal. I think I may have a handout on that in your package, Retired Environmental Technical Assistance Program. So just a couple of case studies. This is the Blue Line Travel Center down in southern part of state off of I-90, out of Worthington, and you can see they have a ton of exterior lights, a gas canopy, and they got a, a PACE project, a PACE funding to replace those, those exterior lights. And you see that they took advantage of funding from the Rural Minnesota Energy Board's PACE program, rebates from the Worthington Public Utilities. They also took advantage of a grant that I wanted to draw your attention to. It's a USDA REAP grant, so it's Rural Energy for America program, USDA REAP grant. It's a straight-up grant, not a loan program, but it's up to twenty-five percent grant funding from USDA for energy efficiency and, and renewable projects. So every business in Clay County is available for REAP grants. Also in the southern part of the state, in Mountain Lake, this is an old county hospital that's been converted to multi-housing, and they got a ninety thousand dollar PACE loan for energy efficiency improvements to this apartment complex. Inch and a half thick insulation in their mechanical room, energy-efficient water heater, lighting, et cetera. They also received a REAP grant, took advantage of rebates, and you can see the savings, nine thousand seven hundred, and their assessment, eight thousand seven hundred. This is Paul's Handyman Service in Red Wing. I wanted to note, PACE can be used for businesses of all sizes, really. Small businesses, like, I imagine Paul's Handyman Service is probably just Paul for his small business, and it's been used for the First National Bank Building, the skyscraper in downtown St. Paul. They put in three thousand LED lights and new HVAC equipment, and got the largest rebate XL has ever given out, a million-dollar rebate for that ginormous skyscape, skyscraper project. What I like about this slide is that Paul says about PACE, it was actually, it was pretty easy. We sent an application in, they approved it in about a month. Honestly, pretty seamless, which is what you want to hear from, from small businesses. They're, they're, they're busy selling their product, hopefully, and so they're, they're not really interested in filling out a lot of forms, and they just want to make it easy as possible. Farms are a niche for, for PACE. I'd say farms as well as multi, as well as professional buildings are the two niche areas for PACE, and this farm in Meeker County put in a forty KW solar array. It's a tracker system, so it tracks the sun, left, right, up, down. They also took advantage of the REAP grant, and you can see considerable savings for this family farm in Meeker County. A restaurant in the Twin Cities, a smaller project, thirty-nine thousand dollars. I also like the quote from this business owner, "The savings should pay back the investment. It's a no-brainer." And heading north to Harbors, this vet clinic put in a modest-sized solar array, I think it's about eleven KW solar array, and this business owner says it's practical, it's doable, truly good thing for your business, your community, and for our world. Got a lot of information online, and for those counties that have established PACE, you know, it's a great program, but it's, it's not so great if nobody knows about it. So we provide a toolkit for counties to help get the word out, if they wish, to help Derek get the word out. We have a draft press release that you or Derek can, can send out saying this is now available, and a PSA, we've got texts for your newsletter, for, for your websites. We just want to make it widely available. In fact, that's one of the things I've found is when I do these presentations to county boards, oftentimes there, there's a reporter sitting in the seats, and there's an article in the local newspaper a day or a week later, a month later, and, and businesses read about it, and they're like, oh, wow, sounds like a pretty good deal. And so they fill out that application and, and get the job done. So happy to answer any questions, and maybe these folks want to pitch in a little bit?
I'll just be quick with it too, but just from the local perspective of Morehead, and really, I think, speaking generally from a county standpoint, we would certainly take advantage of, of advertising this. We have Economic Development Index that I think I'll be presenting to you later this month. But again, it's another tool. We have a lot of small businesses as well as large businesses looking at energy-efficient projects. I'll draw one to your attention right away that you're probably aware of, but Anheuser-Busch is looking to go a hundred percent sustainable at a, at a global corporate level by 2025. They have to make some serious changes at the plant in Morehead if they want to make that work, right? So they've looked at possibilities of, of solar arrays south of that facility, in between that interstate corridor and the actual plant itself. You know, American Crystal Sugar is another one at the large-scale level that has done a lot already without having to take advantage of a program, but certainly having something available to, to help. The cost obviously is the big burden upfront, so to be able to spread it through an assessment is a, is a big deal for these businesses, large and small. So I think it's a, it's a great tool. We're going to promote it if it's passed here today. I think we'd see a lot of, a lot of businesses take advantage of it, definitely.
Frank?
No, I've got a couple questions. First of all, where does the money start out at? Who, where do you get the money from?
So we have a revolving loan fund that we receive through federal grant dollars. It's about, we started with about fifteen million, we now have about seventeen million, and it's just a fund that we continue to revolve. It's fully utilized, so now we have partners throughout the state. Spider Credit Union is a big financial institution in the cities that provides additional funding, and they're actually the ones that are going to be providing for this Park Christian School. So, you know, local credit unions, banks work with us to provide the actual capital. And then we have national PACE financiers that will do large-scale products, projects. So like the First Bank Building was a ten million dollar project. So we have lenders, you know, in New York, Connecticut, Texas, California, that are basically investment trusts, and they provide long-term financing for these projects as well.
Next question I got, they say we have to approve this project or whatever, but you already told me that Park Christian's already doing it. So how does that work out? We haven't approved anything yet, but Park Christian is approved, or?
So they, as far as the financing goes, they have their own capital, but they want to convert a portion of it to PACE financing. So what would have to happen is there would have to be, the board would pass a resolution approving the joint powers agreement. We would have to execute that joint powers agreement, and that would give us the ability to place the special assessment for Park Christian School to convert a portion of the project that they've, that is in work and completion to that PACE assessment portion, if that makes sense.
I would say too, you know, it's, it's no different than Morehead has a loan fund that West Central Initiative manages. A lot of times, the businesses have to get their own finances in order to figure out where that gap may be. In this case, they, they see it as a resource in the PACE funding. So I think a lot of times it's just they have a project in mind, they have funding outlined. This is obviously a tool that they could tap into to, to help their project.
And then, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, once we have a joint powers agreement established with the county, every county has a little bit different process. Some boards of commissioners will approve each loan individually, so we will bring the project to them even after the joint powers agreement is established, so that you guys can see what the project is and you can vote to approve it. Other counties will allow their assessor's office the autonomy to place the assessments without Board of Commissioner approval. So it's totally up to you guys how you want to do it. If you want every project to come before the board to be approved, we can bring it to you guys so you can see what projects going on and approve it that way, or you could grant your assessor's office the ability to do it themselves.
My follow-up question would be, Derek, why, all these projects that are going on downtown Morehead, why isn't every one of them involved in this energy thing?
Well, so Morehead is a green step city, so there, there is some other things that have been taking advantage of it. I think from a, a large-scale energy efficiency standpoint, we probably just haven't seen the scale of it yet, or the tool hasn't been available. Until I, quite frankly, met Peter a couple months ago, I didn't know much about it. So when they came up, presented it to us, now we have that understanding of what's available. So I think, especially from the new project standpoint, I think we could see some improvements to those buildings that could take advantage of it, whether it's lighting, HVAC, et cetera. Some of them are already doing it. Some of them already have financing through their, their traditional ways, but in some, I mean, truthfully, some people don't like to go through another step of, of process. So it just varies from business to business, developer to developer. But I think we would see people take advantage.
I can see a lot of businesses that would take advantage of this in our area. Go ahead, Jim.
How does it work in regards to properties that are tax exempt? How can you property assess that? Such as schools and things like that, faith-based communities? How, how does it work with that?
Right, so as you alluded to, these entities don't pay taxes, so how does that, how does that work?
Right.
They don't pay taxes or property taxes, but they do pay assessments. So PACE works in the exact same way as a street assessment or a sidewalk assessment. They do pay those types of assessments, so they would get a tax bill with zero dollars for property taxes and a thousand dollar assessment, or whatever it might be.
Jim?
So the legislation for special assessing, special assessing, all special assessments that I know of always require a, a public hearing. So did this Minnesota legislation bypass that process?
Correct, because it's voluntary, because the business or entity is requesting it themselves, it does.
So it's, it's basically a hundred percent petition? Petition in favor, okay.
Yeah, there's no, no lien on it from the county or from the local level?
So the, the energy audit itself kind of tells them what they can anticipate in savings by doing that work to make the changes, right? That's what we're talking about here. We did that same thing in Prairie Lakes, solid waste in Perron. We did an energy audit. We did not go through a process where we had it on a special assessment. What we did is, you know, we were assured that, that whatever they recommended in changes would pay for the audit within a certain period of time, and then from that, their, their forward, it was just, you know, that much savings to the bottom line for Prairie Lakes. So the, does the applicant have the ability to put the cost of the energy audit into the financing?
Yep, so we finance a hundred percent of the project. So that's kind of a difference from traditional bank financing, you're not going to see a hundred percent financing. So that hundred percent includes the engineering costs, the audit costs, any pre-construction, basically any, any cost for the project can be rolled into that assessment.
I think if I recall, just for an example, our, the energy audit that was done on the Prairie Lakes facility was forty grand.
Sure, yeah, they can get expensive.
So, so that's what, that's my point. It's not, it's not cheap, just to, and so you have to have some significant savings to benefit even doing it.
True. The audit that you probably got was very comprehensive and was for every system in the facility, would be my guess.
It actually wasn't.
Oh, it wasn't, okay.
It wasn't very comprehensive?
No.
It was for a specific process or?
They, they, what they were, in that forty thousand, they, they knew the plant well enough, it's an energy plant, it's a waste energy plant.
Sure.
So they knew that, just at, at the scope level that we did, that they pretty much guaranteed us.
Sure.
That, so to implement more than that, our, that facility at the time couldn't really afford to do much more. It was already, you know, so this may be a good thing for them to look at.
Yeah. We see, you know, when it comes to businesses approaching us for financing, you know, they're looking generally for a specific, they have, you know, a new HVAC system that they need, or they know that they want to do LED lighting. So when it comes to, you know, a simple, you know, audit for LED lighting, we don't require that they do a full analysis of everything in their building, just for the project that they want to complete. So when it comes to, you know, some stuff can be more complicated, but like when it's renewable energy, for instance, most solar contractors can provide a fairly straightforward analysis of, you know, what the panels will produce in energy and how quickly that will pay back. So we try to, you know, make the energy audit component as easy as possible, so, you know, any third parties that are available, the utilities that can do, you know, rebates and stuff like that generally can provide stuff like that. So we try to make it easy and cheap as possible, but yeah, there's sometimes when it can get quite expensive.
And I have just a couple more questions. So, so I fully understand how this works for an existing business. How do you do an energy audit on new construction?
For new construction, whether it's ashtray or there's other organizations that will look at what base code is available. So if you install like an eighty percent efficient HVAC unit that will just meet whatever the code for the building is, or the city, wherever the code lies, if you jump up to like a ninety-five percent efficient HVAC unit, they can understand what that differential in energy use is. Obviously, the more expensive HVAC equipment, the efficient one is going to be more expensive, but if it has that differential and payback, that's twenty years or less, then it can be financed.
And then, kind of a piggyback to the question that Commissioner Gross asked, is the, the Port Authority, you mentioned you have, do you have, is, is there a limit to what you can do statewide?
So the only limit is to the twenty percent of the assessor appraised value. We, like I said, our revolving loan fund is pretty much fully utilized, so that's why we're starting to partner with banks and credit unions and then national PACE financiers. So as far as limit to our capital, I mean, we, there's been projects in Texas and California that are forty, fifty million dollar PACE projects, so there are capital providers that can do projects that big. The Port Authority is responsive to the smaller projects that you talked about, so that's what we utilize our loan funds for, generally if you want to do like a hundred thousand dollar project or something smaller. When we get into the bigger projects, then that's when the different, the outside financing is generally coming.
And Peter, you'd mentioned that the interest rate is five percent. Does that change when you get into outside lending agencies?
Yeah, so the, the financing that we do is ten years fixed at five percent, and most of the credit unions and banks follow that. The larger financiers, the, the national financiers will do up to twenty years, because that's what the state statute allows. So they can do twenty-year fixed-rate financing. We had a project that we just approved for about five million dollars. The interest rate was six and a quarter.
But again, that's agreed to by the?
Yep, it's agreed to by, you know, whether the customer comes to us with a financier in hand, or if they ask us to find them, we have about probably ten capital providers that we can basically send out a request for proposal and present them with the interest rate opportunities, so.
Well, Mr. I think this is a, this is an excellent tool for the toolbox, so to speak, that we talk about for economic development. I think it's a, I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's a, I think it's a great opportunity. When it gets into us entering into a joint powers, I, I, I don't, I can't say I can do that today. I think it needs the review of, of our attorney's office, you know? And I'm assuming that our Morehead City Council and our Barnesville Economic and all those with development all, all appreciate this tool, so.
Well, and when it comes down to it, it really just provides businesses with options. And that's what, what's, we're just facilitating information and, and availability for, for them to be successful.
Very good. One question on the financing and stuff like that. I mean, all these businesses are saving money and stuff like that. And I asked Friday, where's the money coming from? In the meantime, you guys are having a job. I mean, you're getting paid by somebody. So the money these businesses are saving, that's taken care of here. So are we making money or?
Well, the counties, not necessarily. You know, we have, like I said, we have our revolving loan fund. We split that with the Department of Commerce, the interest that we generate. We put that back into, you know, our marketing, our outreach, making sure we're reaching customers and stuff like that. But for the counties, it's more providing the service for your customers and your residents, so. But, you know, as far as you said earlier, we have counties that will charge administrative fees for placing the assessment, so there's not an added burden on, on the administrative parts of it.
I'd say these companies are saving money, but we're spending it on jobs and stuff like that, so. Which is, I mean, it's creating jobs, which is good.
Right.
But, so we're saving at one end and spending at another, more jobs.
The other, the other nice thing, oh, go ahead Frank.
I would just say, just keep in mind, it's voluntary too, right? So like they're, they're willing to take that on because they can't maybe front that cost upfront. You know, they can't take on a, a solar array or, and a project. So they're willing to take that voluntary assessment, knowing that there's admin fees associated with it. 'Cause there's just not traditional loans available to, to support that.
And the banks are the ones that are making the money with the interest. I mean, that's where, you know, but, you know, like traditional bank financing, that's, you know, the banks are the ones that are making the money, so.
Okay, not that I'm against the money, it's just that it seems like, hey, we're saving money over here, but we're spending it over here, so it's.
Well, I think where everybody wins on this is the fact that, that's in the end what's happening when it, when you have a completed project is we're using less energy. You know, and that's, that's kind of a, that's a big deal, you know? It's, it's, but I, I think, you know, I, I think we should have you submit your, your joint powers documents.
Yep.
And maybe go through Steven here, and then Steven can pass it on to Brian for review. And then as soon as, you know, I think ASAP, we could, we can just vote it in and, and then Derek, you'll have another tool for it.
I think everybody's, everybody in agreement, everybody's in agreement, so. So we'll move forward and then get it done as soon as we can. Great.
Steve, I think you may already have the JPA in your, in your inbox. We'll get it over there and go to review.
If that's the case, we could probably have a recommendation by next week, I suppose.
So, one more question. I mean, you were here a couple of years ago, remember you were here? So why didn't we do that, or where were we at then, that we didn't move ahead for this project then?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think at, at the time, there wasn't a project that was brought forward, so it was more of the concept. And I think one of the things you guys talked about, in the event that there was a project, that that'd be something that you would be interested in, that's why they came forward here.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. This is the Park Christian project contingent upon us passing this joint powers agreement.
I believe it sounds like the project's already, we're kind of, in.
Okay, but we're not holding him up?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So the, so this has to be done in Minnesota?
Correct, we are the, one of the two that operate in Minnesota.
We, we also, Derek, you know this, but we are also a member of the FM. Greater Fargo Morehead Economic Development Authority. And I, I think that should be, you know, if this, if new construction qualifies for this, I think that we would be, we should be using that to let them know. So, so they get, they get requests from the Fargo-Morehead area, for example, about new businesses maybe wanting to move here. And this could just be another, another tool that would make the Minnesota side look that much better.
Right, absolutely.
I'll speak to that, Commissioner Campbell. So I'm not sure if the county, Stephen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know they, the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC had a booklet that shared from Clay County, Cass County, what's available for resources. I would say it was greatly outdated when I first started over a year ago. We've been reviewing that pretty heavily, so I don't know if anybody's been reviewing it at the county level, but we've been looking at it very closely from the Morehead perspective of getting those available tools in there, not only at the local level, but at the state level. They're getting away from traditionally having just like a folder to hand out more electronics so we can add that tool to it, and they can start sharing it. Especially when they're representing us at, you know, from site selector meetings at a, a national level, regional level, they need to be provided with the most up-to-date information and pulling our weight, so.
Okay, we'll move forward with it. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation.
Look forward to working with you.
Okay, we're already up to committee reports. Kevin?
Yeah, I had two meetings last week. The first was Prairie Lakes Solid Waste meeting in Perron on the twenty-eighth. And I think one of the things we talked about is, one of the, one of the things they, they talked about is this year, there's, they've really had struggles this summer with, with the waste that's coming in there. When you try to burn things that are wet, it's difficult to do. It's harder to burn stuff that's wet. So they, you know, the efficiency has gone down a little bit from that. I think, I think originally we were planning for being able to burn fifty-six thousand tons. And I think the actual number's gonna be like, more like fifty-four point four, or something like that. And really, where the, where the difference comes in there is maybe a slight reduction in steam generation. However, the steam generation that we have is meeting what we had projected, so that's still good. They're looking at doing a, a, we're doing an, an expansion to the north unit. They refer to it as throat improvements. Once that's done, it's, there's a lot less maintenance and it's more effective in terms of what it, it can produce. So that'll be a good thing when it's done. That, that project is what, about four hundred thousand dollars, I think? Three to four hundred thousand dollars. And that's, that's been budgeted for. We created a foreign waste policy, and a foreign waste policy, you might ask what that is, and that has to do with medical type of things. And also, when you get into animal waste, that's got different types of disease. You know, like what they have on deer, you know, chronic waste. So, you know, we, we can process those, but, you know, our, our manager, management doesn't like to do it and doesn't, you know, so there's a different price associated to that, too. And then there's, they did talk about, there's, there's some discussion about forming an eleven-county research on different ways to maybe do recycling and, and do more things like with ash and that type of stuff. You know, it's, I certainly said that it's, it's worth looking at. I, I think, you know, they're kinda looking at maybe one site for eleven counties. And I have concern with down the road where that might be and what it could be in term, in terms of transportation costs for Clay County to do things like that. But I, I voted to support the study anyway, so. And then Thursday morning, then we had our solid waste meeting and we got, we had some discussion regarding the tipping fees. I think there's gonna be a, probably a recommendation coming next month from, from SWAC in terms of what the changes to those should be. Shannon gave us an update on recycling, things going on in the county. Matt Evans gave a, a report on the landfill construction project. And then we had just had some general updates from Kirk on the landfill update. But other than that, there was really nothing, you know, of concern going on. And that concludes my report.
Frank?
The only one I had was, we had a, wasn't really a regular meeting. We had a meeting with Georgetown community. They had some concern about dumping of trees up there. And I hope, I think we had a meeting of, oh, with the Morehead people were there and our people were there. And I think we came up with a solution for Georgetown. Hopefully, that's taken care of now. I think it is.
If I can add, you know, so just a little update on that. There was, after this last flood, there were a lot of trees that were, they seemed to collect by bridges. And so the Fifteenth Avenue North Bridge had a lot. And then our County Road One Bridge, which is up there on North Broadway. It's kind of our responsibility to clean that out. So there were a number of trees, and so locally, they were all shredded. But locally, Steve Moore from, they, they couldn't handle the quantity that was there at, at the compost site. Well, they could handle it, but they, they need to pass it someplace else, you know? And so my concern, you know, so we got the, we, we, I think we got the, the current problem. And so they had taken it up to Georgetown. Georgetown, turns out, didn't want it up there. They, I think it was recommended by the watershed that they bring it up there and put it on the watershed lot, which is in the city of Georgetown. And, and so Dave Overbow, we worked with Dave, and Frank and I were there. And I think that's all been agreed to now. That'll be transferred over to, to our county pit, and we'll deal with it there, whether we burn it. And then it also will be, will use, that'll be part of the process for FEMA reimbursement. But my, my overall concern was, was, you know, we're gonna have more floods in the future. And when we have that diversion project in place and we have, you know, that staging area of Clay County land that's down south, we gotta make sure that we have a process in place for where any, any of that kinda stuff would, that would accumulate, where we can make sure we have a place for that to go. So when people are hired to clean it out, they, they know where they can take it and they can include it then in their, in their price for O and M. So I, that's, so I think, temporarily, I think the current solution was good, so.
I have one more. My question was, when we talked about membership of these organizations, I see Morehead's got some question of being a member. Do we as a county have concern about being a member of some of the organizations? Do we have to check that?
No, we, we don't have those worries.
Okay.
We, I can certainly check through with that.
Well, if we don't, I'm okay with that answer. Very good, thank you.
I have one question about the reference you made to the county pit. Which county pit are you referring to?
Well, I think, I think that, I, I think that's kinda, that's up to Dave. I think he, and, and where they're at, I think he's, he's looking at probably the closest pit that he can get to it. And he also, he also understands that, you know, if they're gonna be burning there, too, you know, you probably want it by, by, in a pit that there isn't a lot of residential by, so. You know, so I think Dave's taken all that into consideration, so.
I didn't have anything.
I just said Prairie Lakes, Kevin already reported on that, so, Steve?
Last Tuesday after board, dealt with the ongoing issues of Lake Fifteen. Spent actually not just Tuesday, but better part of last week dealing with some of those issues. Had department head meetings with, with our county attorney on an opioid lawsuit that you guys are going to hear a little bit more about next week in a presentation. We've, I shared it board last week. We were hoping that we would have a certificate of occupancy last Wednesday for the juvenile center. Unfortunately, they weren't able to, to, they didn't feel like they were ready for that inspection. And so that has, was canceled. And so we'll find a little bit more, more about future inspections this afternoon in an orders meeting. On the twenty-ninth, I attended the SWAC meeting that Commissioner Campbell has talked about and also the tree disposal discussion. That afternoon, I met with Shelley Jeffers, Tim Ospey, and two state IT representatives, and our, Tim Dent and Mark Sloan, and looking at the, the needs and changes that would need to take place in, in the magistrate courtroom downstairs and also the courtroom up here. Seemed to be pretty minimal up here. We're looking at making sure that this area is ITV compatible and also making sure that our microphones can interface with, with the state system. And so the, the, if you recall, the, the state did approve the, the referee position, and they'll be making their decision within the next two weeks. Met with Chris Bolkers on last Friday on a series of shared county issues and city. Met with Matt Jacobson on a series of planning zoning issues, and also Joe on some maintenance issues. We did set, the, the next rural city-county meeting will be September nineteenth. And it's gonna be here at the, at the LEC. And so we are gonna, a significant portion of our, of our meeting this time is going to focus on economic development. Karen Lawler from Barnesville, Mr. LaPointe that we saw here today, and then a representative from West Central Initiative are gonna be there to talk about some of the, the programs and just to make all of our cities available. We were approached, Georgia was approached this past week by the city of Morehead Transit Director. They're looking at moving the bus stop from right outside the courthouse. If you notice, it's right in between the three-way stop, so it's kind of dangerous. They're looking to slide it to, to the south in front of the family service center. So they're gonna be having some meetings on that. The challenge that we run into is it would, would take some parking spots, the street parking, but we'll keep you updated there. Again, just a reminder that there's a Northwest Legislative Tour September fifth. This Thursday starts at Morehead State at, at twelve oh five. If you're interested, we can get more information there. Two, just wanted to hand out just an update on where we're at from the levy perspective. If you recall, our first, first levy sheet came in right around thirteen point one nine percent. But you were very clear that that was not good, good enough. And so we've been, been working to, to look at different things. And, and we're now down to seven point three five percent. And we'll continue to, to look there to, to find any, if there are any other alternatives to, to have that lowered. And lastly, just, just a reminder that it's Greater Morehead days start this week, the fifth through the fourteenth, with the bridge bash. We have farmer's market, five K, things like that. So make your citizens aware. And that concludes my report.
Okay, sorry Frank, go ahead.
I was just on this levy here. Did we look at, since the sales tax is coming in higher than we expected, are we looking at transferring any funds, like from maturing, bonds maturing to the budget or?
The, the sales tax that we, that we do receive can only be utilized for the, for the build itself or for the, the law enforcement center and the correction facilities. So we're not able to take any of those funds for other things other than to pay back the, pay back the project.
But one, one of the things we can look at, though, is that, did, did we, you know, we're increasing the building fund from three fifty to four hundred. You know, and that, and that was, that was the design plan to help fund those construction.
That's correct.
Those construction projects. But if, if we're, if we're pulling that far, you know, if our sales tax are that far in more dollars than we anticipated, and I'm thinking it's quite a bit more, then, then that question could be, why are we adding that fifty thousand?
Right, why are we putting that fifty thousand, or why are we taking that? From the windmill taxes, that's coming in about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Why are we putting that money into the jail fund or correctional center fund? We could use that for other things if the sales, sales tax is up there, let's utilize those funds.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good point to make. And I think we, you know, between. know, between now and before we do our preliminary levy, we should, we should get a little bit more in-depth on that sales tax collection, or what we, what we projected versus what it's currently at. I don't think we can safely use all the difference in that.
Well, I think so too, you know, and I think we're looking at the sales tax, so now that's coming in better. If the other thing, say the wind, the windmill taxes only came in at fifty thousand, we'd have to look to get that money from somewhere else then.
Right.
But since the sales tax is coming in higher, let's...
But we put that money towards the jail project, but we could suspend that for a year, right?
Yeah, whatever the board wishes would get.
We don't have to do, we don't have to permanently suspend it, we, you know, for good, with sales tax, now we could spend that portion of it.
You could, yeah, for, like what Frank's talking about, you could use the hundred and fifty thousand, for example, for twenty twenty.
Right.
To reduce the levy as opposed to just setting aside.
Right.
And the same with that fifty thousand.
Yeah, and...
Or you could, or you could make that, make that three hundred and fifty something else.
Have you looked at any of the reserve funds, Steve? We can look at some of that like we've done in the past too, to order the levies, so.
Sure.
Social services.
I'll, I'll get that information for next week.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? We're here.